Or so for search. It's usually connected some way, someone to someone.
One of your officers can read.
She's talking about random vagrancy, which is different than we don't have.
Aren't our weather can.
We haven't, um, but we haven't had any approach that. Any others last time.
There's gonna be a breakout here.
But that was, yeah, that moved along and it was fine.
Mel, you got five thirty? Good evening, everybody. It is five thirty. We will call the city council meeting for December nineteenth to order. Those present will stand and do the pledge of allegiance. Yep, Public Works Director Maples on that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Integrated by, for which sentence, one nation, not God. In the soul, liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. Uh, we have a full house tonight with all four council members here. I have Finance Officer Brown and Deputy Clerk Tira Henry. Public Works Director Maples is here. Brian Colesworthy from the county. Kappa Chamber is here. Bill and Paula Cunningham are here and Melody from the Kent are here. With that, our first time night would be the approval of the minutes from five December.
Also move.
Another motion from Councilwoman Cacoli. And a second from Councilwoman McCartney Duty. Changes or corrections?
On page two, under Mares comments. I'm pretty sure he meant to say the city is now back to being open, not back being open.
What did I do? What did I say?
He announced that City Hall is not back to being open. I'm pretty sure that's in.
Yeah, there's an extra not in there.
So I just wondered if we were on permanent lunch or.
There are days. Any other corrections? Those in favor of the corrected minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll get the minutes corrected and taken care of. Thank you. Leave it to the teacher. While you're here. Um, anybody heading out of state?
Does Bozeman count yet?
Not yet. Getting there. Okay, um, under new business, I'm going to ask that we do not take action on item one tonight. Till after the new year. We had some kinks. Mike got worked out today. We're gonna get some paperwork updated.
Okay.
The project's already been approved, so in the project was it was the purchase of the land, so we're gonna wait until that's taken care of. We have to do the deed filings. And then we will do the resolution to do the deed filings and see if that's attached to it and do it that way.
Okay. Uh, so the property say I moved to table item number one.
I don't want to table it because then I would have to have a motion to bring it back off the table. I would just like not to take action on it, so it can come back at the next.
This is your agenda to do something.
Mel?
I will advise you on all matters of meeting law, but I am not.
Uh, according to the uh. County attorney, she is correct.
I would make a motion to, I would take a motion to table this then. I have a motion from Councilwoman McCartney Duty and a second from Councilman Burge. Those in favor? Opposed? We will table it. I probably not the first me because that's January second with the holiday and getting paperwork done. My guess is it'll be the January, um.
Sixteen.
Sixteenth. No later than sixteen. Okay? Item two would be a vote on the approval of new zoning board members effective one, one twenty-four of Phil Spek told him Bill Podgus. A letter from Phyllis is in here. I don't know where Bills went, but we had it.
It's in the packet. On the back of those is.
And they, they are new.
That's all right. I've seen it. It was there. I just didn't. And I even went through the stuff I took out here.
They're both good.
As long as they've got it, I've already seen it.
I'll move on the approval of the new zoning board numbers.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Cacoli.
Second.
A second from Councilwoman McCartney Duty. These are, these are effective on one, one.
Okay.
Bill will be replacing Al Kostelnik. And Phyllis will be replacing Carol Cole.
Thank you.
We have renewed office on that, but then we realized that the home property.
Any additional comments? Those in favor? Opposed? We will get the letters out to them and thank those letters out thanking Carol Cole and Al Kostelnik as well. At this time, I would like Councilwoman-elect Polly Cunningham to come up and join. Councilwoman Cacoli and Councilwoman McCartney Duty for, we're gonna swear you guys in for the new term, which starts on January second. This way, when we get to January second, we can hit the ground running. Yep, I'll have you stand out there.
You want him to face the.
Face the camera. I'll come around.
Get out of the shot. I like it. I wanna have a stage yourself. The first grade teacher too.
Yes, I will just repeat after me if you would please. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support, protect and defend.
That I will support, protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge my duties of office with fidelity.
And I will discharge my duties of office with fidelity.
All right. Thank you, ladies. That's it. We'll have a paperwork for you to sign. Hit again.
Do you want us to sign them now?
You want it quick? Like do it. Yeah, that's fine.
Sorry, Heather.
You guys, we made history here because this will be the first time in the history of the city of Shoto. That we will have a, a female-controlled city council.
There've been females on it.
Oh, plenty of times, but it's never, never a majority.
So there's been a woman on it. I think the entire time I've been on the council.
But we've never had a majority and I'm excited to, I, ladies, I'm excited to work with you guys. Stuart, so help you.
I grew up in a family full of women. I'm Mr.
Okay. Who was? Oh, wow. That goes back to the old diner days. Wow, cool. Well, congratulations, ladies, and thank you. I'm, I'm.
It was that late.
I'm looking forward to this. Um, next item. Begrudgingly, I would ask the, the, uh. Council to accept the resignation of Public Works Director Mike Maples effective January thirty-first.
What if we don't?
That would be that Wednesday, Mike. Last, that'd be the last Wednesday in. In January.
Okay, I move. That we accept the resignation of City Public Works Director Mike Maples.
I have a motion from Councilman Merja. A second from Councilman Howard. Discussion. Mike, you, you can't, you can't, we can't say enough about it, Mike. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks. It's been a pleasure working with you.
And I found out today with DNRC, you're gonna go through the flood updates and come into Red Lodge.
Cause they've had more water recently than we have.
Any other questions, comment? Those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations, Mike. Um, Mike is here as well. Mike and I sat down and Tira and Tom sat down with Colin. He applied through the open position, uh, inside. And it would be my recommendation at this time to appoint Colin as the new Public Works Director. Effective one, one, so he can work the last thirty-one days with. Um, Mike more so and have his, uh, with his new pay scale to take effect that day as well. He will see an increase in pay. I have a mo, I have a motion from Councilman Howard and a second from Councilwoman Cacoli. Uh, comments?
Oh, I'm just unfamiliar. I was remember that he's probably one of the junior members of a current. Uh, team that we have. Um, could you just speak to a bit about how, what he's gonna bring to the city with his skill set?
Colin, you know, Colin's been my right-hand guy for a long time. He knows. Pretty much everything I do minus maybe the computers a little bit. And he's picking up on that.
Okay.
He's the guy that when there's a problem, he'd done it. He can fix it.
Okay.
There's no issue with that. Um, I would highly recommend that you guys. Put people on that station and, and being sensitive to the fact that, you know. It's a big step up. He's gonna need everybody's help.
Yes.
So.
Well, I would just speak to, you know, when we were building our house, Colin was the guy who was over there. And directing people figuring stuff out. I know when they were digging in the alley. Um. He and Matt Peters would, Matt would dig a little bit and then they'd look and they'd talk and it was, I was very pleased with. Um, just his expertise. Yeah, but also the carefulness that, that he had, you know. It, it's okay to make it take a little longer if we're doing it right. And that was one thing, um. When I heard Colin was interested, I was excited about is I've always seen that carefulness out of him. And, um, I, I appreciate that. It's, it's something that you were also good at, Mike. Is, is you guys don't just wham-bam things. You, you take a look at it and make sure you're getting it fixed, not just putting a Band-Aid on.
My guess is you've been in the trenches with them, Councilman Howard.
Yeah. I mean, you talk about his. One of the junior members. He's got the seniority of the knowledge. I mean, the people that have been here longer, he's the one, Colin is the one who has stepped up and taken on the challenges. Laid out before him and.
Yeah.
Basically has, even though he's the junior member, he has more experience. At the different tasks. I mean, the other guy is. I'll do him in some areas, but all around, he's kind of the guy.
He's one never say no, whoa in a mud hole. There's an issue going on. He's gonna, he's gonna get it fixed. And as Mike said, with the computer stuff. We will help him through that. Tira is getting some knowledge with that part of it back there. So that we can, you know, make sure, we'll have growing pains, no doubt about it, but Mike, I, I wouldn't have him on here if I wasn't. A hundred percent behind the fact that I think over the first year that he's gonna have some growing pains, but he'll get it done and, and we'll fill the job nicely.
Are we advertising to refill his position then too?
We are and we have that. Yeah, and we're expecting some applications in. I believe there's one in currently, but it, it's open through the twenty-seventh. And we would like to, once we get the applications in, get them reviewed, get a committee, we'll have, um, Mike and probably you, Councilman. That if we could do them the twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth. That would be nice so that we could make an announcement on the second and have that person in right away too, so that. There's a transition. That position is already budgeted for. There's that, an open position already, so we should not have any issues, correct? Budgeted.
Do we still have the extra on budget board as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
So. He will see a raise in pay, nothing to what Mike was making, but a significant raise. It'll be about a five dollar an hour raise.
Okay.
To take this over. He has a pro, uh, time to get his other licensing correct.
He's got one, one other license.
Yep.
And that's gonna take a while.
Yep, we knew that. Yeah. And CD, we're, we're gonna try and get everybody CDL better, quicker as well. We're gonna try and get those guys done as best we can.
So you just said something that made me think, so will that leave Levi as the only certified wastewater? Okay, okay.
Okay.
So we need to.
We were that way.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll be good. Don't, don't go get through with any of your.
Okay.
Yeah, we will make every effort to see that he has that opportunity to get through it as quickly as it takes to get the job done.
Yeah.
Yep, so.
It's just important to have a second one.
Yeah. Any other questions or concerns? Those in favor? Opposed? We will welcome Mr. Lightner on board. Next will be our claims list. Questions on the claims?
I move that we pay them.
I have a motion from Councilman Merja.
Second.
A second from Councilman Howard. Nothing out here jumps out.
I, I do have one question. When do we? When is our contract year for the sheriff's department again?
July one. All of our contracts are July one.
Okay, Thursday, December is our fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay.
So next month you will see payments. Yeah, there's payments going out already. Contracts for the next term. Okay? Uh, any other questions on that? Those in favor? Opposed? Pay the bills, Tom. I know I'll be signing things in the morning. Um, law enforcement, Mike, do you want to hang out? You wanted your report.
No.
Okay. Law enforcement report. I didn't get one from thirty-eight, thirty-one, eight. He's been busy. They're sharing the new guys, trying to get them. Uh, oriented in the field. He will get us caught up. Uh, City Judge Rasmussen's there. He had a rough month for, uh. November, didn't he?
Is that, is that the blank?
That's the blank one.
For others is what it says.
Yeah, well, because we get done and then we get the county. I don't, he's just all the reports come in one, so we'll just throw them out there.
Where's the month of November?
It's November.
It's November.
Yes, never, ever.
Because there's never been one.
Yeah, exactly. Um, the. Public Works Director Mike report. You guys have a copy of it? Mike, are you happy with the new water lines and they're showing? Our, our pump time is dropping?
Yeah, I think, no.
Numbers don't lie.
It's, it's, it's already bought and made, where it's just kind of a big project. Um, and we're a good time of year to do it because we're. About where we pump. Almost every other day, it's about. Thirty, between thirty-six and forty hours in the pump run. He's gonna get that changed and I think that might influence our. Percentage is a little bit, so I don't think it's accurate. Um. But no, the project came out good. Um. Yeah. Very happy with that.
I see that there, we've got people in town for folks. They're running around doing up, doing test wells or test ground tests and stuff for the new well.
Doing geotech for the new tanks.
Yep.
And it was kind of funny because when the geotech guys. Are looking at things, they're like, new tanks are real naked. They could see that in the ground. Um, so that's a good sign. Um. But there has been working up there through Thursday, drilling holes, um. Great West was in town doing utility surveys for the engineering on the Cummings projects, um. And then the only, the big, big thing I've been working on is getting the GIS all done. It's kind of my goal and it was one of the things I wanted to do a lot of here because. When you got here to work very many nights, I was, um, go talk to Lindsay or. Bad L test isn't still here or. And I'm pretty happy to get everything done. I said, well, most, most of all, we're gonna do a few. Little bit more on those square lines and it won't be done before I leave, particularly because we haven't. Been able to video all of them. Um, and that's how we locate them and then we're on the map, but it's. It's. It's pretty huge and it's accessible. Like you can, they can get on their phones, see up in the field and see where everything's at. In my mind, it's really ingenious.
Well, as, as Colin learns that system, uh, Mr. Waters over in Missoula is a wonderful resource.
Well, I don't, I'm gonna keep, I mean, this is. Personally, I don't, when, when there's a shortage, I can go find the states or there'll be a ditch and. I'll be available and it's all. In a cloud.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay involved.
Yes.
It's pretty neat, Mike. One of the things we were more of them and looked into. A while back, we bought a really. Good listener. We can find links with. We sent, got it outlined because we made a business, but it's so far, if you hear a leak. You think there, there's a leak right there. It's big, like we couldn't identify a spot that big. So part of. Having gone through all those cards and gotten everything in the computer, we can now go in there and just. Basically make a map that shows all the galvanite, galvanite lines, the ones that are gonna be leaking probably. That are three nineteen twenty, but are still in the ground. And the heat will listen to those. And then go to the customer because it's on them. To fix it. Most times they play them. Um, when it's bad, then. We'll be looking at it. I think it's gonna get rid of, that's where a lot of the. But it's pretty neat.
Um. Which is the tree that's still gotta come down? Which tree's gotta come down still?
Um.
Okay.
Associated with the old dairy building.
Okay. Gotcha. And the recycling center?
It was. It was in the middle of the street. You never realize it because it kind of bends around there. The street. Right now goes more or less on the county. Um, and when they put in their. New sixty-five by hundred and seventy-five Daniel's barn, it's gonna get really crowded. So we're moving everything across to the dog.
It's a nice neighbor.
Yeah, it's going good.
It'll face east out of the wind. Yeah.
Biggest hole up's gonna be the form concrete. Your biggest hole up's gonna be getting, we gotta run three phase power in there for the compact. Um, and that's. We've applied for it and we paid the dues for it. Um, it's just a matter of course that center team. So it could be a month.
Yeah, just the fact that we can pour concrete on the twenty-first of December is a bonus in and of itself, so, okay.
So you're saying it's the city's fault, but there's no snow?
No. They're watering the greens at the country.
I'm hearing you mowing on Christmas Day. I'm gonna punch you. Just so you know.
Okay, I will not, I will not be mowing my lawn in December. They are, uh. Yeah, the, the country club called today and they're turning their water back on. They're gonna water, start watering some greens because they want to know if they could use our. Um, compressor again when they get done, but Kenny's got to get water on some of those greens, those laterals and stuff. He said they're just drying out, so. Crazy, but that's what they're up to.
I was almost fifty-eight today, so.
Um. Zoning and building permits?
Number two new builds on then off the dance and highways and then stop around.
Tom, from your world, finance side?
Just, uh, finishing up payments to Prospect and making sure we're getting all the last few payments from Barba and Ezra and Marty. And then moving on to the next phase of that project. Just a few year and things that George the Roger is helping me finish, but. A of R and Pacha and everything getting to the state on time and, yeah, so everything's good.
Cool. Councilman Merja. Councilwoman McCartney Duty.
Well, just real, uh, nice to see despite surging power costs, people are feeling festive and the town looks really lovely. Um, every, all the neighborhoods have lit up in some way, so that's just real pleasing to see that people are feeling festive.
School concert? Thursday, grade school?
Grade school, elementary, K six.
Be there early or might not get a chair? Okay.
For usual.
Yeah, well, the, and the high school one was almost standing room only.
Um, I want you to know that. A certain student in the first grade won't tell me what they're singing because it's a surprise.
Rules are rules.
Well, and she's very compliant that way, so. Councilman Howard. On your farewell tour.
We were getting ready for the. I don't know, eighth, maybe. Fireman's I've. So it's coming up the Super Bowl Saturday.
Good turnout for the stroll with the fire guys and the kids love that being on the, on the fire truck.
Yeah. Had several phone calls about all the. Well, drilling and painting in the alleys and streets. I thought it was just the next phase, so.
It is a bit what, what they call it, one B. I believe that's the, the term for this project now would be phase one B.
About it.
Councilwoman Cacoli. Um, couple of things from my desk. Dogs, dogs continue to. Create some issues. Um. We're working through that. You know, again, we'll get through it and come spring, we'll get a chance to have some more meetings on it. Um. With the recent events at the library and. Ms., uh, Councilwoman-elect Cunningham's on the friends of the library. We are sending on Tuesdays and Wednesdays now through. The fourteenth of, through Valentine's Day. Shawna's going down in the afternoon to help them out. She's working eight to eleven here and then twelve to five at the. Um. Down at the library.
And did that start this week?
Started today.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, it could put us in a bind. I mean, we, we're gonna have some growing pains at times, but to me. With closing the library a day was not an option and Tom, Tira, we sat down and figured out we could get this done. Shawna said she was more than willing to take that on. Under duties as, as, as other duties as assigned and, um. Talked to Paula and Joe at the county level. They had no heartburn with it. Talked to, um. Margie from the board and talked to the friends and. If someone's angry about me doing that, I apologize, but we've got to have access to that place. And closing it down another day is not an answer till. They get a long-term plan for some better funding. We can help them out till February and then we'll probably get too busy to do that, but. Uh, I want to thank Shawna for. I want to thank Shawna for stepping up and taking care of that and Tom and Tira for saying, if something happens, we would make sure that there's somebody down there Tuesday, Wednesdays for those five hours each day.
Appreciate it.
So. Um, I got a call today from Lewis and Clark Brewing Company. There will not be a Bob Marshall Music Festival in Shoto next summer. There will not be a music festival at all. They said that they, the bands they wanted were being outbid by other people. They don't have the money to get into that type of a game and therefore Heidi said it was not feasible for them to do that, but she did say if we need help at any of our events or we need um, ATMs like we had last summer for the Brew Fest, she said she would gladly come and work with the chamber and pour beer with us at, at any event that we asked her to, so. Um, trying to think what else. Had a good meeting today with the DNRC folks and Jerry Gerbask on flood stuff, got a better idea of timelines. Um, for our first parts of meeting, I, I believe our first meeting will be late week of twenty-fourth, somewhere around there, twenty second of Ju, of January, from the sounds of it today. Hannah was going to look at her timelines and try and get some of that taken care of. Um, they've got some additional data that came from the uh, Conservation District. Some of it was not H and H data, so it was not acceptable, but they did take some other data that was part of a stream bank restoration program that fit the bill and they thought that that was very handy to have and very helpful to have. Um, it was myself, Jerry, Tira was on for a little bit. Um, Nate Wadsworth and Hannah from, and Doug, the engineer from DNRC, so went very well. We'll keep you guys updated on that. I did post out there that I'm going to try and get some folks from the city to sit down with us and walk through this data. Um, I've got letters ready to go out to uh, the Hartmans, Dave or Jane. I would take either. Um, I've asked a letter, I have a letter going out to Pete Howard as well. And I will get a letter out to a couple of other folks that I know were in, involved. I've been around long enough to know have some ideas of what took place and things like that. Very good, very good meeting today. Um, other than that, I don't have a whole lot, you guys. I was just going to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas. We are scheduled to go on the second of, of January. Um, January is going to be one of those months where we have five Tuesdays, so we may have to we'll see how it goes for bills and stuff on between the second or I'm open for suggestions if you didn't want to go the second, if you would rather go um, nine and twenty-three?
Something for you?
I was just going to say, what works best for you?
I prefer to stay on the second personally, because while we're working on through Friday, the week before, rest Monday off.
Yep, okay.
But.
Okay.
And then we can adjust if we have to do something for them, because we're going to have a couple of week period, almost a three period then where we would have no meetings and have to deal with bills and stuff, so.
If we got to do something, we can use.
Yeah.
Ad hoc. Well, not, not ad hoc, Mel, not ad hoc.
We could post, we could, we could, we could do a special meeting. We could do a special meeting if we had to. Um.
It's, it's been a, a term in infinite campus for.
Anything else from anybody? Brian? Councilman-elect? Ca, Councilman-elect? Mel? Higher?
I have heard from the county commissioners that property tax payments came in long as late.
Oh, you mean personally, I mean, I'd have to ask that guy.
Amounts and I just percentage of people actually came in on, but I heard from the county was that they had better than usual return on first half assets.
I just. Let's go about it. It's a real large okay. Usually for the summer, it'll be another large payment.
That's good. I mean, it, it truly is. I know that I have not heard of any. No. If you have nothing else for the good of the order, I would say we are adjourned and we'll see you next year and welcome in our new crew. Thank you, Councilman Howard. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, guys.